You'll sleep like a baby tonight.
I will, anyway.
It wouldn't be any different than any other night, would it?
At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We have an agenda before us. I understand Agenda Item Number Nine will be removed from the agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Under that agenda, as we open this meeting, it's really a pleasure to introduce some leadership as well as new officers to the Marshall Police Department. And I'd like to invite Director of Public Safety, Marshall Police Chief Jim Marshall to begin those introductions. And as Jim's coming up, I'd like to welcome all of the officers that are also here, that are not new, that are continuing to serve the community. We truly appreciate your work. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate your time tonight. I am glad to be here because I get the opportunity to introduce some of our new employees. And maybe "new" isn't the right word because some of them you may recognize. And I'm going to start with actually Quinn on the end here. Quinn Bullard actually had the joy of starting with our department in the peak of COVID. So his training experience was a little bit differently. I don't know if he got in on 12-hour shifts, the seven days, 10 days a week, but his experience was a little bit different. But Quinn is originally from Illinois. Quinn came to us through SMSU. He came here on a football scholarship, so you probably had a chance to see him if you ever went to an SMSU game. He was the anchor of their offensive line for a number of years. Quinn graduated from SMSU with a degree in psychology. And after he graduated, he actually had a short stint in Denmark with the semi-pro football team. Came back to Minnesota and received his training at Alexandria Tech and was hired shortly after our department. Quinn is married. He's married to his wife, Lea. And it's great to have him part of our team for a number of reasons, but probably one of the one reasons why I enjoy Quinn so much is he's a true epitome of what a gentle giant really is. Next to him is Peter Vu. Peter was originally born in actually Oregon, and he came to Tracy a number of years ago with his family. Peter graduated from Tracy and then continued his education at Tracy High School, or at Alexandria Tech after graduating from Tracy. He is the first Hmong that we've had the opportunity to hire. He speaks fluent in Hmong, and he is also part of our Air National Guard. The one thing that I enjoy about Peter is, as you can see, is every day he comes to work with that smile on his face. Every day, just about. So glad to have him part of our team. Next is Connor. Connor Roth. Connor is a hometown boy. His parents are Al and Mary Roth. He is old enough to be a police officer. He graduated from high school. I hate saying this in 2020, but he's our most recent hire. Actually, we just unwrapped his leather gear not a couple of weeks ago. This is actually his second week, so anytime we get an officer to come back in the second week, it's a good sign. We know Connor's going to have a great future with the police department. Hopefully, he's here for a long time, so we appreciate his presence. And then on the end is Jory Dove. And Council, I don't know if you remember, a little less than a year ago, I came to you with this agreement with Western Mental Health, this new idea that we called the Co-Responder Program that was new. It was new to the state of Minnesota. There was only a few other departments, some Rochester, I think Duluth, St. Cloud had that program. And we entered into that agreement so they could help provide some mental health care for those within our community, work with us side by side. And I've always said I'm completely honest with this. It wasn't, I was optimistic, but I was a little bit hesitant of bringing somebody from the outside into our organization. And Jory has just been a great fit and a great asset for us to use within the community. He provides onsite sometimes care for people that we're dealing with that are struggling with mental health. But it's the backside of it, the follow-up, the programming, the appointments that they need to get to that he's able to do with us. And I think probably the greatest compliment that I can give to Jory is we try to work through our own employee wellness issues within the department, and it's been an overwhelming request from our officers that Jory is part of that puzzle for us as well. So great to have him part of our team. And maybe before I end, we had our first departmental meeting in three and a half years for a number of reasons. Obviously, COVID being a big one and some of the safety things that we put in place. So we had that this afternoon. And one of the requests that was asked of me is to, number one, thank you guys for your support in the last four years. For sure, it's been probably the most difficult time in the profession, our profession, for a number of different reasons. And your support has never been questioned within our police department, so I thank you for that. And then I was also asked, and this is coming through me, not from me, but I want to thank City Administrator Hanson and Sheila Dubs. You know, we just finished, we talked about a little bit before this, some contract negotiations. And I want to thank them for their professionalism, the respect that was shown during those. And maybe just as important than that is their willingness to listen. So we appreciate them and the work that they did. And thank you. Thank you. And these are your new officers. I hope, look, we worked through a lot the last four years. Again, I'm so proud of the bunch behind me, and I hope that you guys are as well.
Thank you, Jim. Let's recognize.
Welcome. You are old enough.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
So I think one of the things, I'm calling Chief Marshall back up to the podium. You have a lot of your department here. I think it'd be good to take a few minutes just to recognize everybody that's here. So if they'd want to introduce themselves, or you could introduce them.
Sure.
And also what their positions are. You've had some changes in your leaderships.
We have, sure. Why don't Ben and Ryan first come up real quick? Talk about leadership changes within the police department. We had the retirement of Jeff Winker, who was a captain and was with our department for over 30 years. And during that promotional process, Ryan Hoffman was promoted to captain. I'm grateful for his presence, Ryan. I don't know if you want to say anything. And then Ben is now our new sergeant with the police department. Along with that, we have Nathan. Where's Nate? Nate? Nate, come on up here because Nate, I introduced Nate three and a half years ago, four years ago, as a new marshal police officer. Nate has been promoted to a corporal within the police department. So glad for these guys and their leadership. But again, we're just a small part of it. The rest is everybody behind you. You guys want to come on up and introduce yourselves?
So Jason, you can set the standard here, so.
Yeah.
Jason Bice, I'm the investigative sergeant.
I'm Kalen Sandgren. I'm a detective.
Jason Kupitsky, I'm a detective with Kalen and Jason.
I'm Adam Bowman. I'm a corporal with the police department.
Ryan Brunswold, I'm in the patrol division.
My name's Scott Wilson, also with the patrol division.
Derek Dederman, also on the patrol.
Ben Kelly, also on patrol.
Ryan Arzor with patrol.
Aaron Furth, part of patrol division.
Chris Croft, I'm a corporal.
Aleish Papowski, patrol division.
Sarah Van Leeuwen, patrol and school resource officer.
Eric Lincoln, patrol division.
Cliff Bar, CSO.
Kevin Grunwald, part-time CSO.
Beth Superior Records.
Tessa DePastal, administrative assistant.
Well, thank you, everyone. Let's recognize. Once again, we appreciate your work. I don't know if any other council member has anything they want to add at this point.
Thank you.
Just thank you very much.
You're all welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. I will move then to Agenda Item Number Two, which is consider the approval of the minutes from the last regular meeting. That was held on June 14. The council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections or additions, corrections to note?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Jim, seconded by Steve to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Before we go any farther, and my apologies, Stephen, the introduce Stephen Anderson, who is the new city clerk for the city of Marshall. So Stephen, welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything as far as introduction of yourself?
I've been in Marshall since 2004. I graduated from SMSU and
I think you have to push your button so we can hear you.
It's on.
Is it on? There you go.
Nope, just glad to be here with all of you and maybe I'll be taking over on the next meeting here.
Yep. Well, welcome, Stephen. So. Sheila, I don't think there's anybody else that needs an introduction tonight, so we'll proceed then with our public hearing. Our Agenda Item Number Three is a public hearing on the CDI addition. This is a public hearing on the preliminary plat. And we'll also then consider the approval of the preliminary plat as well as a resolution that would adopt the final plat. I'll call on Jason Anderson, city engineer, director of public works, to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Included in the packet, you should have a copy of both the preliminary and the final plat for CDI addition. This property is located just north and west of the Cattours Gas Station near 68 and 59. The property owner here wishes to split the properties that are currently combined to separate the two buildings on those lots. Our city ordinance 66-31 requires a plat whenever a subdivision of land is proposed. And since this has not been platted prior, it's a meets and balances description, a plat needed to be initiated. The split does create an issue where the back building does not have access to a roadway or a right-of-way. That's being resolved by the use of ingress and egress easement out to Highway 68. I do know that the property owner is present here tonight if there's any questions, but also included in the packet, you've got the engineer's checklist for both preliminary and final plat. We would recommend to move forward and approve.
Thank you, Jason. Is there any input as part of this public hearing? Any comments from the council as part of this public hearing? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by John, seconded by Jim to close the public hearing. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll now then consider the approval of preliminary plat. Is there a motion to that effect?
So move.
Motion by Russ.
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll now consider the resolution that would adopt the final plat.
So move. Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to approve the final plat for the CDI addition. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. So this concludes the actions related to the CDI addition. Mr. Bladholm, we really appreciate your contributions to the community. So, thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
You don't have to leave either, Chuck. You can stay here.
We'll move then to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are up on the screen. They include consider the resolution designated Medsurity LLC and Matrix Trust as the health reimbursement arrangement trustee. Consider the resolution designating the amended official depositories for city funds for 2022. Consider approval of temporary on sale and tax evasion liquor license for Lyon County Agricultural Society. And consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for separate discussion?
Move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. First item of new business is Agenda Item Number Eight. This is the state aid overlay project. We have a change order number five, the final change order and acknowledgement of the final pay request. I'll call on, once again, Jason Anderson, city engineer, director of public works, to present this agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the state aid overlay project from last year, largely completed last year on numerous busier routes across the community. There was some final work that had to occur yet this year with some ramp crossings on North Forest Street. All the work is now completed. It's been inspected by the state aid office at MinDOT District Eight, and we're ready to finalize the project and get it off the books. You've got the final reconciling change order for consideration as well as the final pay request. Reconciling change order results in a decrease of the project total $65,170.74. So the project came in slightly under budget. We would recommend to approve the change order and the final payment.
Discussion or any questions for Jason?
Mr. Mayor, Jason, on the very last page, four or five, they're talking about defects on Country Club Drive. Was that also defects on Lyon Street? Did we get that credit back?
The few patches on Lyon Street were pretty small and not as widespread. So really what we did was we looked at Country Club Drive and the numerous patches over there, and we assessed damages for that. We didn't deem anything else to be as concerning. The dollars there that you see in those liquidated damages will go towards seal coating it this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions? If not, Steve?
Mr. Mayor, let it be known that I hate change orders unless they have the parentheses around them and are negative. So given that, I move to approve this change order and final payment.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim to approve the change order as presented. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda Item Number Nine was removed from the agenda, so Agenda Item Number Ten is the renewal of the limited use permit for the non-motorized trail along Trunk Highway 23. Once again, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. You've got the MinDOT limited use permit in front of you for consideration. It's pretty much a standard form MinDOT permit. We have the North Bike Trail project that was completed in 2009. It includes some trail and Highway 23 right-of-way out by the college. To have these facilities in the right-of-way, MinDOT requires these types of permits. City staff would recommend that we enter into the permit agreement and we don't think about it for 10 more years.
Questions? Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda Item Number Eleven, consider the request for proposals for insurance agent services. Sharon?
Mayor and council, if you remember from last fall or late fall, the council directed staff to seek requests for proposals on insurance brokerage services specific to workers' comp, property liability, and auto. And since that time, Finance Department, including Carla and EJ Molberg, have developed an RFP. And with your permission, EJ can explain some timelines and some parameters of the request for proposal.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. EJ?
Thank you. So we did request proposals from various other places that have gone through one in recent years. We had some various cities that we used. And in fact, when we were looking at it, there was actually one on the League of Minnesota Cities website that we called and requested a copy of as well. So the timeline as proposed within the proposed document before you includes that this request, if it's approved tonight, would go live tomorrow with a proposal due date of July 29, so one month. And then we'd have a review process, potential interviews and presentations from those if necessary, potentially lead to a final decision the last week of August or so, and then it would come before the council the first meeting of September. So the plan as stated on this would be that the proposed timeline would be that the council would approve this in September. The current agent would assist with our October 1 renewal, which is for, everything but workers' comp is renewed in October every year. The existing company has been working with staff for a few months already on a number of things such as coverage and the like. So we'd do that, but then the, any award would be effective as of October 1 for moving forward.
Thank you, EJ. Any questions? If not, is there a motion for the approval of the RFP process?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? That will move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda Item Number Twelve is Commission Board Liaison Report. So I'll keep mine brief this evening. The Southwest Regional Development Commission has their annual meeting. Southwest Regional Development Commission represents cities, counties, school districts, nonprofits, and townships in the nine-county area. And their annual meeting is held each July. And their annual meeting this year will be held in Marshall on July 14 at the Red Baron Arena. And you are all welcome to attend that. The guest speaker is a, actually a loan client through the Southwest Regional Development Commission Revolving Loan Fund, who has an immigration law service based out of Worthington, and she will be the guest speaker. Again, that will be July 14. The revolving loan fund of the Regional Development Commission had received $1.48 million at the onset of COVID to run a separate revolving loan fund to address some of the COVID-related issues. And that has been entirely loaned out. And as of June 30, then the provisions that were available because it was a COVID RLF fund, namely the requirement for a participating lender, the 75% of prime, flexibility on terms, that those flexibilities expire. The good news is that that $1.48 million is added to the existing revolving loan fund, which continues to revolve and is available for job creation and retention for employers in the region. With that, Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Southwest Amateur Sports Commission met week before last. Sharon and I were both in attendance. I took great notes and left them in my folder at home, but I've got most of it, I think, in memory. And Sharon helped me out if I missed some things, but mostly good news, really good news. They've, like MAB, has had full tournaments. You know, we know they lost the one-state tournament, but they've had a number of other tournaments that have been full and busy. One thing that they did want us to pass on is that their 13, I don't remember if it was double-A tournament, they were full, but there are terrible, terrible shortage on these weekend events for rooms. Hutchinson had two teams. Both teams ended up traveling back and forth between Hutchinson and Marshall because they couldn't get rooms. So that's kind of a continuing concern is just availabilities. Some of it may be related. We don't know for sure to, not all of the hotels may be renting or, you know, putting out 100% of their rooms just based on available help. We don't know that, but we just know that it's been a problem there. But the good news is they're filling these tournaments and they're getting good feedback on the community, on the facilities. So those things continue to be positive. One other thing that came up, we actually had a visit from the director of the skating club for figure skating. There's a real shortage of quality skates for the skate rental program, and that's critical for starting new skaters, both in hockey and figure skating. So the Hockey Association just elected a new president, Mike Borboom, and he was there, and they were going to kind of try to help work with that with some, you know, bringing some skates up and making them available for the building program. And there's other discussion for possibly replacing and replenishing the skate rental program at the arena. So that, I guess that's a good problem to have. And then other than that, just some other concerns about, you know, overall about practice space, the volleyball. Apparently, he's been using a building donated by Schwanz that they now need back. So the volleyball club is looking for practice space. They have their own floor that they bring in and put down. They're in discussions with availability of floor time at Red Baron. And again, there's, you know, that creates some issues. There's also some interest in possibly a, kind of like a juniors program team, but it's a different organization than we're used to. It's not the same as the Ice Dogs. So there's a little bit more work being done to look into the potential of having another program come into Marshall and utilize Red Baron and ice time. And then, of course, we know that the Ice Dogs are coming back again this year, and maybe Russ will talk about that a little bit more, too. But more positives. So everybody that's used the facility, the facilities, the fields, the arena, and our organizations just continue to get good feedback from the community. So it's just a lot more positive. So we really appreciate all the efforts by the sports groups and the facility people to continue to have a good program here in Marshall. That's all I have.
Very good. Steve?
Cable Commission and Community Services did not meet. EDA, as we had discussed before, did not have a quorum. We did do a virtual vote afterwards, though, on Soundstergard, which we talked about previously, and that's all.
Okay, a couple of things. Legislative Inordinance Committee did meet prior to, a little while prior to this meeting. And we'll be seeing some surface water management ordinance changes and some floodplain management ordinance changes that are part of a mandated change through state. Then just kind of an expectation coming up, perhaps at the next meeting, we should have a rental ordinance that's coming to council. That, a lot of work's been put in and brought forward.
Just to clarify, there'll be a public hearing on the rental ordinance?
That's right.
So people understand that there'll be a public hearing before it finalizes with council.
Likely in August.
Like in August? Okay. Corrected. That's good. As mentioned, EDA, we've covered that already. Utilities did meet. A couple of things that wanted to cover. Some of us probably didn't even know that on Memorial Day, storm damage
Some of us probably didn't even know that on Memorial Day, storm damage, we had nine broken transmission poles that came down, cables down on the ground in the earth. Didn't flicker the lights. Everything worked just the way it should. Everything went back up. Within three days, between MMU staff and the construction company that was able to come in with a larger boom, they were able to put all nine of the poles back up. It's a section, I believe, that extension out from 33 is where it occurred. Kind of interesting, if you take a look at it, every 10th pole is a reinforced or a steel pole and did just exactly what it's supposed to do. The first one goes as normal. It's just dominoes falling until it hits something that can hold itself up and the rest of it. So it took out nine poles in a row, got to the steel, one stopped. But that was interesting that occurred, and we hardly noticed it here in town. Kind of congratulations go out to Laurie Lamott after 37 years of working at MMU and 40 years overall as linemen. So he's retired. And then at the meeting, take a little bit more time on this, hope the normal mayor, but there was a lot of discussion on the MISO notification that you probably have seen that's been out on Facebook and MMU has been putting it out. Really emphasize this is a potential for a short time of blackout or lack of electricity that will hit, could hit this area. The conditions have to be very right to do that. It has to be hot weather, no wind, cloudy maybe, and some of those conditions really don't all go together. So I emphasize that this is just a potential that this would occur. But what it amounts to is the organization that is two steps above MMU. So MMU, we get power through Missouri River, and MISO is the acronym that controls the transmission line. They're saying it's a possibility that this could happen, just a warning that goes out. The way it occurs and plans have been made, we've had several meetings on this with basically potential, could be a potential emergency situation if it did come in. Likelihood of occurring would be between the hours of 2:00 in the afternoon and 7:00 in the afternoon when things are probably the worst for power draw. It would probably be something like a hot August day or some day like that, that, again, the weather conditions are really right, so it's not something that's easily predicted. What happens is MMU gets notified that they have to start lowering the load or the amount of electricity used. They have been working with customers and agreeing, so up to the first level and most into the second level, they've got customers that said, okay, you notify us. And they have a half hour to drop that load. So it's a very short time after being notified. But within that half hour, customers say, yes, we can drop some of our load and soften the blow. Or increase their generation. Or, well, they will be increasing their generation, basically turning on all the generators we have in the area that are able to run, which in itself helps reduce the load. But with that, that gets us through the first stage on that. If it hits the second or third stage, again, this is a potential. And it's, it's just that. It's a possibility that it could happen. If it would be, MMU has devised a plan where there may be an outage, but no more than an hour long. So it would be a one-hour shutdown of power for a section. And then it would rotate to another section for as long as this session may last, which is, but they've been told somewhere in the area, two to four hours. So this is not a emergency, kind of stressing, there's no need to worry about a lot of, you know, get a generator, get this ready, do something there. This is typically a short break in the power. Things like freezers are going to be just fine. You may notice it on your air conditioner, gets a little warmer in the house, that's about it. And of course, lights are out, TV's off, so, okay. It's hard to get internet at those times. So it may be just a nice quiet time to take a nap or something. But again, this is just a discussion that's going on, plans that are put in place should it happen. But, you know, there's a lot of conditions that need to be in place, and there are ways of monitoring it. So MMU will be a little more aware of it should the conditions become right. They can watch that on the, kind of a live feed of power usage in the region. And they'll be ready to take action. They've got plans worked out. But this is totally unusual. They're usually making sure power is on, and now they're having to make plans to cut off some powers if it's needed. And again, stress that if it's needed. So it's not likely that's going to happen, but it could. So I think that's about it. Mayor, you've been involved in those conversations and Sharon as well, anything that you want to add?
I would just add, add one or two things. First off, the, the planning that's gone on, the meetings that we've all been involved in, is really part of good emergency management, no different than when we plan for the possibility that we could have a weather event or we could have. It's just good emergency management. The likelihood is what we've been told is not likely, but it's possible. The, the ability of the MMU to work with major customers, reduce their load as well as turn on generation that a lot of businesses that may have, that will also help with the situation. And then the limited blackout would be kind of the worst-case scenario. That's a possibility that's being planned for. And the hope is that they're planning for it, but, and the plans are in place should it be called for, but it, you know, there's not the expectation that it's a given that it will absolutely happen. But it's just good emergency planning. Sharon, anything you want to add on that?
I know we reiterated to MMU, General Manager Communication, and just the importance of, you know, just good messaging on what you need the public to do. I think when engineers, sorry, Jason and Councilman New Kramer, start talking, it gets a little too technical. And I think sometimes MMU is at fault for that a little bit. So hopefully, if there is a situation that MMU seeks guidance from our communication team, like Alex Peterson and Mayor Burns, who's done a lot of communication. So I don't know if we got that across at that meeting or not, but that's important.
I could get a little more technical if you want.
My question would be, you said communication, Sharon, how are we going to let the public know? Nobody has addressed that.
That's a good point, Jim. The, so if there is a, well, let me talk about a couple phases. One is some communication that has already happened, you know, knowing, you know, communicating with the public. And this is happening all over the MISO region, which encompasses 42 million people. So it's that, we're a very small part of that, obviously. The, so, you know, just good communication of, you know, here's what the MISO forecast is in worst-case scenario. And then secondly, and you've seen this on both the Marshall as well as the MMU Facebook pages, here's good common sense things to do during the summer to actually reduce our energy bill. You know, pay attention to where your, where your air conditioning level is at. If you're gone for the weekend, you can turn it up. The, you know, just some other common sense things that probably most people are already doing, as well as some good home, home management, home preparedness. For example, if you have a sump pump that runs every few minutes, well, it's probably good anyway to have a battery backup for that sump pump because who knows what could happen when you're gone. The second level, and I'll jump right to if there was a, the second level is more MMU communicating with their major customers. The third level, where John said that there would be a half hour notice, it's the intent not, not only to use the normal communication means that the city and MMU uses, but also to use code red, which is why our Public Safety Department is encouraging everyone to sign up for code red because then you get that notice on, on your cell phone, similar to if there's a severe weather warning.
Then the second question to that is, we did have a day last week where it hit 102 degrees. How close at that point, did they say, how close at that point were we? Because you don't get much hotter than that in southwest Minnesota than a week ago Monday.
So, so John, you can add to this, but MMU has a dashboard, and it's like, green is fine, yellow is in the middle, and that's, you know, caution, and then red is, let's be concerned. It was in the green area. And one of the reasons for that is that, yes, it was hot for a couple of days, but it was also windy. So the, the wind generation, and as John had mentioned earlier, probably the, the most concerning situation would be if you have a week where it's really hot and there's no wind.
And cloudy. So a quick question then, just so that it's clear and understanding, because when you look at other of these situations that have occurred in other parts of the country, for example, Texas, Texas was because of a bad delivery system, a poorly planned, poorly managed delivery system. This is a baseload issue. It's not a delivery system. The, the transmission is good. It's, it's base power, non, non, non-solar, non-wind, correct?
Let me try to get non-technical on that, but not really. Transmission does have a capability, or does, is a factor in this because they're not able to move all the power in the direction that's, needs it from some of the sources of generation. Because, you know, we have generators, well, like Marshall, we get generation from the Oahu Dam, from Laramie River out in Wyoming. There are areas that it, when things get bad, let's, and just pick a Chicago. They may not be able to channel enough connections on the transmission line to get the power there that they need. So that would be a location that may see some rotating blackouts, something like that. So it is partially generation, but it, there's, there's a whole lot.
Also delivery.
Also delivery.
And my concern is Marshall, and I'm glad to hear when we were really hot out, we're still on the greens. So that's a good sign that your likelihood, this is like a 500-year flood. It probably will not happen. So it's saying it may happen. This probably will never happen, but it slightly could. If it happens to Marshall, I should head to the casino.
I think the slots are electronic, they won't work.
They have a generator, I've been here and they lost power.
I think the other thing I would add is, you know, Marshall has had nearly two years of 100% reliability. We have a very robust system. John mentioned the feeder line that failed, but there was two others that, that provided power to the city. So I think we can, you know, have comfort in the, kind of the good infrastructure that the city has through the investment of MMU, that we have really a robust system that's really based on reliability within the city. What we're talking about here is, is something completely out of the city's control. And if it happens, then we need to plan, you know, react to it. But it's certainly not anything that is in MMU's control.
Right.
And the way it sounds, it's something we should not over-worry ourselves about. It could happen, but a lot of stuff could happen.
We could have a tornado, we could have a lot of things. But yeah, you're right.
Just be prepared, yep.
Be prepared.
Anything more on that, John?
Nope, that's it for mine.
Okay, Russ?
Well, my reports will seem rather boring after that.
Boring's okay. You want some technical stuff to add?
Yeah, okay.
Marshall Area Transit was the only committee that met, and I was unable to do, but as a lot of businesses in town, they are facing a severe shortage of drivers. They're currently down to eight drivers. When COVID began, they sat at 19, both full and part-time. They initiated a $2 increase across the board in February, that with the hope of that would be increasing some staff, and that didn't, not materialize. So currently, what each week, they're having four of the eight drivers have had to work six days a week with the majority of time being on overtime. So that synopsis can't continue very long without affecting budgets and everything else. So in the end is that they are recommending some, some suspension in routes, and they're going to, they were going to suspend the blue route currently running Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. The red route would end at 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday, as opposed to 7:00 PM. The red route would only run 10:00 to 3:00 on Saturday, as opposed to 10:00 to 7:00, both Saturday and Sunday. And, but dial-a-ride service would still be available both Saturday and Sunday from 8:30 to 12:30. It also will still meet our Marshall dial-a-rides, dial-a-ride span of service at 5:45 AM to 9:00 PM during the week, along with Monday through Friday. Countywide service is 6:30. So again, like a lot of our businesses, the severe shortage of help is affecting service with, with Marshall Area Transit, but we hope that things will improve shortly. So the other thing I want to just bring up, and Councilman Schaefer made reference to it, is a state baseball tournament that Marshall did not get. I think every, probably every one of the council members received a call or an email or somebody from somebody complaining about what happened. And what happened is that an individual made a mistake, plain and simple. She admitted it, she owns up to it. So we can't change the thing now. Mayor Burns said here a couple of weeks ago, you know, there's, there's a lot of events going on that weekend. So what would have happened if we would have blocked off those rooms for the baseball tournament? The weddings and everything else that were happening that weekend would have to go someplace else. But, you know, they've looked at hotel rooms from, from Redwood Falls to Granite Falls to Montevideo to Cambi to Pipestone, everything else. There's just none available for that weekend. And there was some concern, concern that Marshall would never be considered to get a state tournament again. That is absolutely 100% untrue because this individual sent a letter to the state asking, admitted the mistake, boom, and asking that they would be, hopefully be considered in the future. And the response that I believe that got from the state was absolutely Marshall will be considered because you do have outstanding facilities. It was just a blip in the system, something happened. But again, it wasn't, while one person made the mistake, it should be the responsibility as well of the organization to follow up a little bit. Just don't rely, I mean, if I send Sharon an email, should I rely on Sharon taking care of it and not respond if, if she doesn't respond to me? No, I think it's my responsibility to, to follow up, and that did not happen. So just to make things clear, it was a mistake, plain and simple. I don't think that Marshall has crossed off the agenda for, for future state tournaments. I think it's just something that happened and we move on, plain and simple. So I think, I think that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jim?
All right, anything after you two? I just, I can't top it, so I have nothing.
Move then to individual items. Craig?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Steve?
Nothing.
Jim?
I do have some stuff. This last week, I attended the League of Minnesota City Conference up in Duluth with Mayor Bob and Administrator Sharon Hansen. And I always think it's a good learning experience. You get to meet people, you get to network. And one of the, and I'll just share, one of the programs I went to was Amazon and Taxes. Because you think, oh my gosh, Amazon is taking away sales tax. And the truth is, it actually helps smaller communities because when you buy your product, let me rephrase that. It helps smaller communities with sales tax collections, like we have a sales tax addition to City Marshall. It does hurt us, it hurts your bricks and mortars with property taxes, but we're not losing that sales tax revenue because if you order that in front of your computer in Marshall, we collect the sales tax. So in that sense, Amazon is good on So in that sense, Amazon is good on sales tax, but is a little hard on the property taxes because it does hurt the brick and mortars because we're not necessarily going to Walmart because we're ordering in our seats. So, and then just the networking. I networked, I sat with the gentleman, and I think you said his name, his name is Gary.
Carlson.
Carlson, the head of the League of Minnesota Cities Lobbyist. And I don't know, he starts picking my brain on all kinds of stuff. And that's where I got to talking about VRBOs and Airbnbs and, and what the state is doing on those. And the state is looking at them, obviously there's nothing concrete yet. But just to sit with this gentleman, ask me, so Jim, what would you like to see changed? Well, if you guys know me, I got in my soapbox for the next hour, so.
Why should I do that again?
He probably, well, he does, I've run into him before.
You need to touch base with him and make sure we're still okay.
We excluded her out of the conversation. And it's just a good networking thing, and I, and I enjoy it, but I think it's good to network. And I'll say that honestly, I'd never spent so much time with Mayor Bob, and so I got to visit with our mayor and learn a little bit more about him.
I'm sorry, Bob.
It was a positive experience, Craig. You should bring that with someday.
We had five hours in the same vehicle.
That's almost like going to Colorado Springs.
Anyway, that's all I have, so. You're next, Russell.
Two things. One, I believe, Jason, this has been on our CIP for a long time, and it might help our hotel situation, campground. I mean, I know Councilman Schaefer's talked about that a couple of times. I've talked about, maybe Councilman Meister at the same time, you know. That would help the hotel situation a little bit because there's more and more people that are into camping. And, and again, I don't think we can forget that. So I just bring it up as a reminder.
You bring that up, is there something that we could, when we travel with our kids, we camp when they're actually, the two years my kids are athletic, we always camp. Can we work with Camden on something? Or Garvin? Because we do have two campgrounds not too far away.
Cambie's another one.
I mean, I'm just throwing that idea out there that.
You are able to reserve a spot at Camden at any time, just get on site and they can, you can reserve a campsite. So that's pretty, actually pretty easy to do. However, weekends, and if you look at most state parks, weekends are full.
Yeah, they're full a year out.
Yeah.
It's, it's, you're exactly right, Russ. When, when this state tournament got changed, my son is in Mabo, we had to scramble. And there, there are people camping in St. Cloud and Sartell and the tournaments in Little Falls, I believe, or no.
Pierce, I thought it was.
It's in Pierce. And so we got on, we're camping in Pierce, we got a campground in Pierce. So we were lucky. I don't know how we got it, but we got it, so. But every place we go, we typically go camping, and it really is nice.
Yeah, I mean, it's just an awareness, and even if we talk to the county and say, hey, can we use the, use the county fairgrounds for camping during these busy weekends?
Yeah.
You know, something is better than nothing, you know? And I just bring it up. The other thing I want to talk about is that I've had a few people call me or see me, what is the city doing about all this tall grass that's not being mowed around town? I said, the city's responsibility is to notify the landowner, but you have to notify the city first. So if you, if you have a neighbor, or if you have someone on your block, or you see it around town, you know, I'm telling the public, call Jason Anderson, our city engineer, and he'll take care of the problem from there. So it's just, I know we've had some issues with tall grass, and not the liquor store, tall grass around town, so.
And I would add to that, Russ, if, because I have a gal that, she's afraid to talk to Jason, I don't know what Jason's intimidating. She always calls me, and call your council member. Like, Jason, I call you maybe once a week about a response a citizen called.
Yeah, and they can call the Public Works General Line too, and just report it to anybody, and we'll take care of it.
Just, and my question along with that, Jason, could the street department, say, as they're driving around doing their maintenance and everything else, say, hey, I see this house on XYZ street, the grass doesn't look like it's been mowed for three weeks?
Yeah, I think we do that to some extent. And I think the council's asked us to do that to a limited extent.
Yeah, it's just an awareness for the public. If you see it, let somebody at the city know, or else council members know. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
John?
Nothing.
The only thing I would add is, you know, this coming week is 4th of July, there's a lot of events that are planned at Independence Park. Independence Park is, of course, nearing the completion, I would say, Jason, of the, of the improvement project that's happening there. So it should really be a nice venue for all of the fourth activities. So it should be a good, good holiday. With that, we'll move then to the staff report. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I did report this in my weekly update, but just to reiterate it again, we have mediation, asked me on Wednesday, July 6th, and I think we'll come to an agreement. I just think we need a third party to kind of help communicate. And you probably did see, worked with EJ last week on an appeal letter to the state demographer, they estimated our 2021 population lower than the US Census, although households were higher than what the US Census reported in 2020. So it doesn't really make any sense. And we did utilize our building inspection permit data, which was really helpful, and our, some construction, new housing information from our city assessor. So we'll see what comes from that. I know what we also have on our docket is to look at the census appeal. I know the mayor has commented on that several times. And EJ and Stephen will be assisting the city with that and doing some discussion with SMSU on their resident data and what it's, what it may or may not look like for the fall of 2022. So timing is kind of critical with that. But that's all I had at this point, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any questions? If not, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned the park project, and that is coming along quite well. I think they're trying to focus and emphasize backfilling around a lot of the trails that have been installed in the park at this time to try to make sure we don't have a lot of trip hazards out there over the fourth, because the project won't be complete, but there is a lot that is complete. And we just want to make sure when it's dark that nobody trips. So it is making its way, we're getting close, it's starting to look nice. I think the area around the pond that got completed under a separate contract is largely completed now and starts, starting to look great. MMU's got their lights in, and I think they said this morning, they've been working since late last week. So if you want to take a look at night, they should have some lights around that are on. So it's starting to really take shape, that's a great thing. Holber Road project is going well, those sanitary sewer and water work is complete. They, we're working on storm sewer, I think, starting today, so that's kind of going, going well. We're just about ready to get into road building mode out there. The Baldwin parking lot behind City Hall, bid opening is tomorrow. We're working with our city attorney and with CenturyLink on some agreement language. We should have that in place at the same time that we come to award the contract at the next meeting. So that's, that should be good. You may remember, we have a Legion Field drainage project near Buffalo Ridge, concrete on the other side of the railroad tracks, near Parkway Edition, that was in the capital improvement plan for this year. We finally are making some headway with BNSF on permitting. I would expect that we have that all in place pretty soon. And now we'll just have to talk about what our deadline will be. It'll certainly be a project that goes into next year, but we just have to determine when, when, and how. But permitting's finally breaking through. Work in the diversion channel has started, RNG Construction has started this week. That was a project we awarded last year as well. Water levels are down, the channel's dried up, they're in there working. So that's a good thing as well. South First and Greeley, we're told, maybe the second week in July, that project could get started. Still a little flexible with contractor scheduling. The one block along Block 11 of Lion Street may start as early as next week. RNG Construction wants to get in and get the utilities done pretty soon here so that can get built and done. So I think that's about it, just a lot of stuff starting to pick up. We've had a little bit of a late start to some of our projects, but a lot of things going on.
Okay. Jason, and the Rose parking lot, I believe it is, behind the nickel, looks awesome.
Yeah, great, thank you. Yeah, we agree. We think it looks really nice and Contractor did a great job.
They were fast, too, all the, both, all the parties in there. That, that lot came out looking really good.
Yeah, we appreciate how quickly RNG came in and has construction and got it done.
You might, might want to mention, just as a heads up, you know, they ran into, you know, 100-year-old soils underneath there that were inconsistent. So that required some extra work.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Heads up to the council and to Councilman Meister. There will be change, there were change orders we had to issue on that project to rectify some poor soils. You saw a pumper truck, if you took note, that we wanted to keep off of, we wanted to keep concrete trucks off of the subgrade in the base. So they pumped that in, that was an extra cost. We did an overdig and added more granular material, that was an extra cost. So it did cost us more, but our hope is that we have a great project and a great parking lot that'll last a long time.
Well, as I, for the first time in my lifetime, we no longer have the barrels that held the meters.
Yeah.
We have been there for over 50, well, hell, they're about as old as you, Russ.
Ouch.
Yeah. And it did, I was back there last night, I made a trip back there, it does look very nice, and that's the first thing I noticed is, you no longer have the steel barrels that used to hold the meters, which, they've been gone for, what, 30, 40 years, haven't they?
Forty, yeah.
Now we just hope cars don't bump the wall or each other.
Any other questions for Jason? If not, Dennis?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. We'll move then to the remaining items on the agenda, which includes our information items, our building permits. Any comments on either of those? If not, agenda item number 19 is consideration to go into closed session for discussion, attorney-client privileged discussion of the Helena property. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim, to go into closed session, discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass.